Good afternoon and welcome to the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake Meeting of Council held April the seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen. And before we start, we'll start with a moment of silence, please. Have the approval of the agenda?
It's moved by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor Mino. The council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of April seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, as presented.
All in favor? Let's carry it. Is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? None declared? Petitions and allegations, item four, Kirkland Gold Miners? We got Steve and Barry coming up, okay? Okay, so just welcome and make sure those green, the green lights are on, on the microphones.
No, they are.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
Just wanted to have a brief discussion with council over the situation with the Gold Miners hockey team. Tom and I and Barry have been meeting over the last couple of weeks and discussing some issues with the club and we also had some conversations with the current executive. And we're looking at restructuring the executive, improving the vision of the team on, in the town, building positive relationships with other community groups and those types of things. So, in saying that, we've identified three major things that we'd like to do before we can determine whether we're going to move in that direction, because we haven't decided that that's what we're going to do. First of all, we're hockey people, and second of all, we're Kirkland Lake people. And we've done a lot in the past for the community and for hockey, and I think that the Gold Miners have an opportunity to improve in a number of areas. And like I said, we've identified three things that we'd like to do, and the most important thing is to rebuild a positive partnership with town council and staff. I think that's the number one thing that we have to do to make the team successful in town, because the community has to view it as a positive organization. The group that's currently operating the team's doing a good job, but there's certain areas that we feel that need to be improved, that if we can build a positive relationship with other community groups, with council, with the town, then that would draw more interest in the club and, like it was three or four years ago, you know, when more and more people were going to the rink and those types of things. So, what we're doing is, at this early stage, is we'd like to request to open dialogue with the town, and it's basically going to be Tom and myself and Fergie, and whether council decides it's going to be a couple of designated counselors, and of course Bonnie and representation from Parks and Recreation, just to talk about, you know, how we can improve things. I think that's key. Along with that, the second step is if we can gauge the interest within the municipality and council and the town staff, the second is to launch a ticket campaign during the CJKL trade show where people can come and pay a deposit and commit to a season ticket for the upcoming season. We're going to make some adjustments to our current rates to try and make it more affordable and more appealing to hockey fans to attend the games. So that's item number two. And then item number three is solely on the fact that item number one and item number two work. Item number three is what we need to do as the new group to repair and to improve the internal runnings of the hockey club. So those are our three priorities, and we just want to briefly talk to you tonight. We don't want to get in any meat and potatoes, and we just want to lay out that we haven't committed, I haven't committed, Barry hasn't committed, we're just doing this preliminary investigation to see if it's worth putting the time and effort into ensuring that the Gold Miners are an active member of this community, right? That's basically what we're looking for. I'd like to hear maybe from some of the members of council that have gone to games or their opinions about how they view the club and the community, or, you know, I don't know, I just opened that up, but would that be possible?
Sure, sure. Counselor Kylie.
Yeah, first of all, thanks Steve and Fergie for coming out this afternoon. I'm a season ticket holder and I enjoy the hockey entertainment. I think you're right about the rebooting the relationship. At one time, I know I've mentioned this in the past and I don't want to drag this on, but we had talked about possibly the rec committee getting back to where there's representation from the user group and from the stakeholders of the community. We've got an investment up there between the complex and the pool of thirty-five, forty million dollars probably, and it belongs to the community, and I think improving that communication will go a long way to patching up the relationship. It's been a little rocky at times, nobody's blaming anybody, we can all improve. I want to see the team succeed, and I am very pleased to hear that you've taken the initiative to improve the relationship and the product on the ice and in the operation of the team, and I think I can say on behalf of council, we do support the miners, we have in the past, and we will continue. I know there's some talk on the street about the subsidies that we do give to the town, or to the hockey team. On the other side of the coin, if you look at it, if we didn't have that revenue that we do get from the Gold Miners, we would have to replace it. So, for those people that are talking about that, just be careful what you wish for, in my opinion, because we do need the revenue from the hockey team, and we want to be fair, but we have to be fair to the citizens of Kirkland Lake. So, you've got my hundred percent support, and I'm sure council feels the same way. That's my view of the hockey team, and best of luck.
I think, I think if we decide to move ahead, we're moving forward. We're not going to rehash anything that's happened in the past. We're going to, like I said, everything's got to be positive, and we have to have a positive look in the community and so forth. We can't waste time with negative thoughts and those types of things.
Thank you.
Counselor Shamir.
Yeah, Steve, that was, thank you, thank you for coming, guys. Tom has, I know Tom has been working hard on this for a couple of weeks, maybe a month, and I think the coach coming back too, which is a big thing to know. I think, like you said, and that was my point I was going to make at first, was there's nothing to repair, really. We're starting, every year starts at zero and we go from there. I mean, you've worked with Bonnie all the time, you've been working with Bonnie for numbers of years, never any problem, and it should be continuing the same. I'm happy, I hope you got to go ahead with this. I was happy when I heard your guys' name was on it. I'm sure it's going to be well done. And I think, I don't want to criticize anybody before, because they work hard, those guys, but they were a bit keeping more information to them. I think you have to tell people what's going on all the time, and that is, that's important. Fergie's on the radio every morning and he could easily, like, people want to know what's going on, I mean, they want to know right now what's going on. Is there any players, who's coming back, who's not coming back? And that's just to keep the interest going twenty, twelve months a year, that's important. I mean, hopefully, and you know I'll help you, Steve and Fergie, I'm just trying to figure out what I'm going to do next year, and from there I'll probably get involved, as I usually do. Tom has talked to me, and I would work with you guys all the time, you know that. And I think it's important for the people of Kirkland Lake to have a hockey team. The seniors love to come here. When we have Legion, people will come in at five-thirty and sit around and talk hockey for two hours, and me and Fergie were involved together, and it was fun, they like to do this. They wait, they wait all week to do this. I see your number one fan is sitting in a corner, the big bill. But, but, that's important. People see themselves in the hockey team, and we have, we have to keep this going. And like Pat said, the revenue is important to town too. I mean, we don't make a lot of money, but the place is busy and the place is occupied, and that's, that's what we want.
One of the, one of the things I, one of the things why I would like to see it succeed, I remember a few years ago when we had that run, that great run in the playoffs and Fire Marshal's not here, a thousand and three people in the building. And there was such community pride at the time. I look at it, the town, cities, countries, we take our identity through athletics, you know, and it can be a unifying, a unifying force, and we'd like to see it get back to that, if at all possible, and we are willing to put the work in, you know, to make it go, to make it succeed. And we're looking for a fresh start, dawning of a new era for the Gold Miners, and hopefully it's onwards and upwards and everything will be positive.
Counselor Mino.
Yeah, I agree with my fellow counselors. I mean, hockey is Kirkland Lake, and Kirkland Lake is hockey. I mean, what was the saying about the NHL was built on Kirkland Lake? Certainly, we'd like to maintain that tradition, that's certainly strong. I mean, this building is a testament to that, and obviously, we are hockey people. So, and also, I mean, you two gentlemen, behind the Dudley Hewitt Cup organization, I was there to help out, and I have full confidence in your endeavors, and I would certainly support that, hands down. So, it's not about who's doing it, it's about the goal to achieve as a, you know, as a group and two people coming together. As far as council is concerned, we have our limitations. We cannot necessarily just say, yeah, we endorse you guys and just give you, you know, the blank checks and the full support, because obviously, we wear many hats. My, the structure that you propose, or that Pat proposed, ties us in, because we have, like, say for instance, the Culver Operating Authority, we have different groups that we might have council representation, but I believe that Joanne is right, when we have three or more members, now it becomes an official committee of council. So, if your desire is to have one member of council sit on that committee, I think we could accommodate that. I mean, that would not be difficult. And then we could talk Gold Miners exclusively and then report to council, you know, direct line. Decision still belongs to council, but at least the information would be clean, clear, and concise and to the point. So, I'm suggesting that to you. The other thing is, you probably know that I'm the one guy behind the big sports tourism strategy, and one of the thing that, the strategy is meant to be flexible, and it's also, it encourages creativity, because the strategy is an incentive. So, in other words, if you people put something together that gives you an incentive to bring in more people into town, then we will reward you with whatever creativity comes through the table. So, for example...
The Dudley Hewitt Cup.
The Dudley Hewitt Cup is a perfect example. You've got the ice time, but we've got the tourism dollars to go with it. Now, those endeavors are welcome all the way, and that's what the sports tourism strategy does. I'll give you another example, and I know it's not necessarily doable, if the out-of-town teams that come to play, the Gold Miners, on Friday night or Saturday and stayed into our local establishments, that would be part of that sports tourism strategy incentive. So, I would encourage you to work with Bonnie or a committee if that's going to be the case, and, you know, put it out there. And if it has mutual benefits, I'm certainly in support of that, and I would certainly not hesitate to expand that strategy to include the Gold Miners in one form or another. You're probably familiar with the Swinging Club, too. You know, I'm just citing those examples because, and the Figure Skaters, those examples are examples that they've enjoyed that success, they've returned that money that they've saved back to the organization, make them stronger, and more participants join the club. So, throwing that out there, hopefully you'll, you'll take it upon yourselves to suggest some ideas through Bonnie or through a committee, and I'm in full support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think you've, you know, you're hearing from council, I'm very pleased to see you two gentlemen sitting there, and with the addition of Tom, you know, I think it's a good group, certainly, or, and as Sean Gee, Counselor Shamir had said, there's really nothing to repair with the town, we're going forward, and we'll go on from there. I think when you get new blood, you get more excitement in the community. You know, I know if anybody can get things going, Fergie, you're a good example of that, you know, you can get things rocking and get things, get people excited. I think if anything, that's what I sort of didn't see this year, is any excitement. There was really never any mention, other than the Wednesday or Thursday, that coach, I think it was Wednesday or Thursday?
Thursday.
That the coach was on, but not a lot of dialogue during the day, you know, and that's sort of what gets people out. A lot of people forget there's a game, many of us are too lazy, sometimes we need a friend to pull us with them. There's a lot of reasons people don't go to the game, but I think there's, one of the reasons people do go to a game, and that's to support the people that are behind the team. And I think with you and Tom, and with the addition of Tom and you two, as well as the other crew, you might rebuild that back in town again. So, people need a reason to go, and, you know, it's a great idea to start selling some tickets early. Now you've got a commitment from people, right? And I think that's important, but I want to thank you for coming and, you know, explain to us what your intentions are. I think I could speak for council when I say we hope that you three will join in, but the decision is yours, the challenge is yours, isn't it? But certainly, I think the community would welcome that, and we want to wish you the best of luck, and I don't know if anybody else has anything to add, except, you know, good fortune, again, if we can be of any, of any use, we're here, you see us every day, so.
Well, thank you for giving us the opportunity.
Hey, our pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Okay, I guess next is Lynn and Sue from the Hundredth Anniversary Committee are going to come up and, I think, give us some good news about a generous donation and other things.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, as long as the light is shining green, you're okay.
Oh, okay. Here's the principal's voice, eh? Well, the young people at the Easter egg hunt at the museum the other day had no trouble hearing me at all. Just a commercial, to piggyback on what came before, just to let you know, we had a skating party on the first of January, the KL One Hundred Club Committee, and the Gold Miners were there, and in February, we had a bowling activity for kids in the community, and that went over really well. And then we had our Easter egg hunt on the thirty-first of March, and so we're building momentum as we go along, trying to build an excitement in the community, involve a lot of community people in the process, and I really would like to thank the staff at the town hall and also with the various organizations that we have to deal with, like the complex, the museum, et cetera, they've been most generous. But with the, with the Easter egg hunt, it cost us nothing. The donations were fabulous from all the grocery stores and other businesses in town. The teenagers served the meal, cleaned up after, provided entertainment for the kids, including the Easter bunny, or as I call them, the Beaster Honey. And, and then the ladies, the auxiliary at the museum also prepared the food, so absolutely no money. So that was wonderful, we had about ninety people in there, the kids and their parents and grandparents, it went really well and got lots of accolades from the public. So, we're trying to build the momentum and include as many groups in town as we can in what we're doing. As I came here, approached by two, for could they hop on the board with us for activities in the next year? So that's wonderful, that's the kind of thing we need, but it keeps us really busy and things happen quickly, and we have to be able to respond quickly. And you've been very generous in providing for us, because we find out something one week and it needs to be moved on very quickly. So that's why we're here today to discuss a very generous donation for our committee, and you have the request before you, and the requests are that the Town of Kirkland Lake, Kirkland Lake One Hundredth Anniversary Committee enter into a lease agreement paid for by a donation for seventeen months, that the Town of Kirkland Lake issue a charitable receipt to the donor, that the Town of Kirkland Lake provide tenant insurance for the rental, that the Town of Kirkland Lake approves the use of the office furniture printer and laptop that we're presently using, thanks to the town, at the new location. Apart from the insurance cost, no cost would be incurred by the local taxpayers. And I'll just let Sue mention to you some of the uses that the, that the facility that is going to be leased.
So, um...
Go ahead, Sue.
This location is historically fitting to us. The lease would start May first and continue to September thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Because we're doing a year-long celebration, and not just for, during homecoming, we feel that we should be visible, accessible to the community. The location is wheelchair accessible, visitors will be able to drop in to pick up our brochures that have our information, buy our tickets for our events, and we also need to be able to have our board meetings run a little later than right now where we are at the town hall. The hours of operation also is an issue, because we would, with the town hall closing at four and not open on weekends, we would like to be open longer, so we would like to be open on the weekends, and especially as our summer months are coming up. We have a big event coming up in August, we're going to be doing a Rib Fest Craft Fair, of course, which we again will be approaching council for permission for some things, but we have certain things that we're trying to accomplish this year in preparation for the celebration of two thousand and nineteen. Of course, we're working hard on the opening ceremonies, which will be the New Year's Eve Gala, because with Kirkland Lake celebrating their birthday, January the first, we would like to make sure that New Year's Eve, that we have a really good turnout, and therefore we need to be, how do I say, we need to be ready to, daily, for things that are coming in. The, the location will also be used by four students who are working on a walking tour app. We need them to start in June, mid-June, and they'll be working on that, so they're going to try to do a hundred locations with the walking tour app. So we need a place for them to work. And like Lynn said, we are also going to be working on the homecoming parade, and we need a place to, again, for that, and we'll be working on many reunions, organizing, getting the venues ready for people. We, I think that was pretty much, we're just trying to get ourselves organized so that we are easy to get a hold of, and we have a venue with that. And with this donor approaching us and saying that he would provide a location for us where all this can happen, we thought was very generous, and therefore, with us not having any money at the moment, that we would, we cannot cover the insurance part of that, and that's the request, one of the requests that we're asking for. Any questions?
Counselor Kylie.
Yeah, Sue, do we know what the cost of the insurance would be?
No, I'm not sure if we're able to go through the town and use it as a rider, as a tenant insurance, if that's, that package can be done. That was something that will have to be looked into, I'm not sure what the cost would be.
It's just a tenants...
It'd be a tenants' insurance to cover the furniture, the laptop, the, just what our committee would be using, like, you know, I'm not, we're not asking for insurance for the whole building, just a tenants' insurance to cover the, I'm asking for like a desk, fountain cabinet, laptop, and printer, that is presently in use in the basement at the town hall, is where I am.
Counselor Shamir.
Yeah, Sue, we had a new thing this year, we're not, remember, we said we're not paying insurance? So what we would have to do is you would have to find a cost for that, and then we could make a donation if that's the way we want to do. Hey, Tony? Or Joanne?
Yeah, I mean, I look at it like, like the Town of Kirkland Lake made a commitment to the Hundredth Anniversary, that we would give twenty thousand dollars a year for the next two, two or...
It went from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen.
Twenty sixteen, so four times. I look at that as our monetary donation. What the committee wants to do with the donation that you're getting is really up to you, because it won't be the town doing any leasing, it'll be the anniversary, but the, the money would come from the donator to the town, and then we would give the money to your account, where it belongs. You would spend that money, just like you spend the twenty thousand that we give you every year. I look at it as that's our financial commitment, is the twenty thousand dollars. Perhaps you can find a donator, another donator to pay the insurance, but it just becomes difficult.
I think my question for the insurance is, the town has insurance when you do events, right? Whether it be the Civic or the complex or...
But there are buildings, like there are assets.
No, I just wondered if it was possible to get a rider, I don't know what you would call it, and, you know, on, through the town's insurance. I don't, I'm not sure.
I don't know if that's, if that's even possible, but that shouldn't be the, oh, yes, Wolf.
We are dealing with the insurance company right now, and they came back today with more questions, but not, not an answer, a firm answer, as to what could be done, what, how it would be done and that. We were hoping to have that for tonight, but we just haven't had it yet. We will be able to make a comment on that, though.
Okay. So we have, oh, Counselor Morgan.
I just wanted to comment.
Please.
I just wanted to comment in general on the situation, because I sit on the committee. This is really a key piece of a very significant puzzle, which is unfolding with the Hundredth Anniversary Committee, and there's, there's numerous events and activities and announcements that will be spilling out of this partnership, and it's extremely exciting. I mean, I can't really speak enough about it. And this, and this location is ideal for all of these activities, and it was identified both by the committee and by the donor, and some of the things that, again, these undertakings that are happening, that are related to the Hundredth Anniversary, I got to tell you that this is going to be one of the most incredible Hundredth Anniversaries of any community, probably ten times our size, with very little cost to the municipality. I mean, this is really a lot of leverage on what's happening here. So, personally, I'm certainly in favor of exploring what Wolf is doing to try and... to try and minimize the, the insurance cost to this group because, because this is, like, they are really doing their work and, and, and creating a tremendous amount of leverage from the twenty thousand dollars that, that we're, we're contributing. And so I would like to see, make sure that, you know, we, we give them as many breaks as you can. Whether it's, you know, whether there's a, a small cost involved, certainly I'm willing to look at it either way. But I just want to make sure that we're trying to accommodate them and trying to reduce their cost as much as we can. And that's, that's, I guess, where I'm coming from. If there's a big cost to council, then you know what? We're going to have to discuss it again. But I just want to, I guess, make sure that we're directing staff to continue to provide the best option for, for this, this committee at this point in time.
Councilor Shamia.
Shouldn't this be handled the same way we handled the festival committee? Like, because, I mean, you have a lot of, you're not going to get insurance every time you do a little.
Through, through the town, if we do it through one of theirs, then our committee gets charged for, for usage of, like Lynn said, everything was free, but we do, we do get charged for the use of the museum.
Yeah, yeah.
But through the, through the twenty thousand.
But like the festival committee had to get their own insurance, starting in October, November, I think, last year. I think you should look at the same way. I like Todd said, I don't mind if we pay for the insurance like we did for the festival committee. But, because, because, I mean, month after month, you'll, you'll need insurance on whatever you do. Even if it's the Easter eggs, really, you should have had some insurance on this in case a kid break his leg or something. Like, I don't know what you should do. I think I, I would look to get like the festival committee first, we think, Todd.
Well, I, my understanding is the structure is slightly different because this is an extension of council, whereas festivals used to be that way. And then we, we spun them out when the previous CIO was here. So maybe Wolf can speak to this.
I think that there are some parallels with the situations. First off is that, let's deal with the easy ones, equipment, computer and all that. That's not an issue, okay? With the committee, when they're doing an event, we always make sure that they are properly insured. If they're working, say, they're doing something at Heritage North or the museum, then our insurance is covering them in that facility. If they're doing something, say, at the complex or out at Civic Park, if necessary, we buy that extra little bit of insurance to make sure that they're covered. And it's, it's minimal cost, just, you know, a few dollars, really, it's not anything. In terms of going forward with this, there are some restrictions that we would face that they would not face. So if we go to take a lease, we go to do anything like that, we have a procurement policy that we would be following, would be competitive, et cetera. But if you look at the original terms for the Kirkland Lake Hundredth Anniversary Committee, they can act more independently. And it says specifically, "The committee shall not be subject to town procurement policy, but is encouraged to purchase locally." They have that flexibility to go and make that deal that suits their needs. And we can find ways to help and support that. I'd like to know what our insurance company says for a rider. And if we can cover it that way because they are a committee of the town, great. If the company comes back and says, "No, you can't," well, this is still something that could be covered under the town's commitment. Because as we discussed a few months ago, there are some dollars under that municipal commitment that will not be flowed back in because they're being used to actually organize and create. And that would be minimal impact to the town then. So I think that if we could do it that way, we could be a win-win everywhere.
Councilor Mino.
Well, Wolf, you just answered my question because I remember when I brought this up at the, in two thousand and sixteen budgeting, the reason to do twenty thousand dollars a year was to obviously to alleviate the budget impact in twenty nineteen. But as soon as the committee would have been formed, that committee had full control of that money. So in my mind, there's sixty thousand dollars there now that you can actually manage and control and decide because on that committee, we have staff that sits on that committee. So there's monitoring of what's going on. So in, in my view, if you have insurance costs and if you can, you know, if you need to dip into the pot, I would certainly say it's, it's your prerogative. If, if we can help you by doing an extension of our policies, well, for sure. That is certainly our, our intentions to make this as, as smooth and as easy as possible for this committee. We, we support this hundred percent all the way. But you do have full financial control of that money, to my knowledge, unless terms of reference have changed. You know, it's like, go for it.
I, I like how fast it did the whiplash look at me.
You notice I looked right back over?
Lynn, I thought the glasses were going to fly off of your head. I want to be, I just want to make it clear that the twenty thousand dollars that council approves is twenty thousand dollars a year. What's not spent is kept as a reserve. And then in twenty nineteen, that money is made available through the economic development department. So they're working each year with twenty thousand dollars, not sixty, accumulated sixty. That will be when they get to twenty nineteen. But so far, I think you've spent maybe ten thousand, twelve thousand? They've been pretty good. They're, they watch their pennies and they're amazing at going out and tapping people for sponsorships and assistance. So I think that they'll probably be continuing the same way.
Still have my blessing.
You know, I think if anything, going forward, I, what, what I'm sort of hearing is, is that I think you're best to move forward and leave us out of the picture as much as you can. Because once we get involved, everything changes, from procurement to everything else. And now you're going to be working your, your rears off and you're not going to accomplish anything because all you're going to be doing is fighting the policies. So my suggestion would be, run it as you will, spend the money. That's why you're there. You're, you're, you're there to make, for the hundredth anniversary. But try to do it without the talent if you can. That would be my suggestion.
And maybe I owe them an apology, but I, I encourage them to come back to council for the simple reason that there is an incredible amount of activity that's about to start happening. And there's going to be a lot of very incredible things that you're going to see at this headquarters, et cetera, et cetera. And I just want the public to know that there is not an extra dime of taxpayers' money involved in this. This has all been accumulated by the committee, like from donors and from other activities. And it is not the municipality doing this per se. Like, this is, we, they have our blessing, obviously, but these are not tax dollars. I mean, this is going to be really fantastic. And I just want people to know that this is their doing. And, and that's why I encourage them to come back to council, particularly at this juncture where there's a, you know, they're, they're about to take a major step here. And I wanted that extra clarity so that people understand. And, and they, that the public appreciates what they're doing and doesn't, you know, make this into something that it isn't.
Yeah, because I, I think as time goes on, if, if you decide the route you want to go is to rent that location, God bless you. And if people start thinking that it's community or talent money, you know what? We've been dealing with the foolishness of social media for four years anyway, so it really doesn't matter what people think, ones that come to our, to our meetings and know what's going on and hear here tonight that there is a donation and it's not talent money, then that, that's, that, that's fine. And other than that, people can say or think whatever they want, you know?
I think once people see what it will be announced this summer, that they will be on board. I really believe that pe, the community will, will know what, what we're up to and what we're trying to accomplish. And we're trying to make twenty nineteen the, the biggest celebration that this community has seen since the KLCBI reunions that were so big in the day. And, and I, I want this to be one of those.
Well, I, I'm sure it's going to be, Sue. And especially, you know, you've got a good crew.
Yes, we do.
Everybody's working hard. But my, again, my advice would be to try to keep us out of it. Once you get politicians involved, you're, you're beat.
It's hard to keep you out of it because we have a lot of stuff that we're going to be doing with town property that we have to come back to council and ask permission for.
I think.
And I think we have to keep the town council, mayor council, updated on what is coming down the pipe.
No, I think it's important that we know what's going on. But as far as making any decisions, yous are all capable, fully capable. That's why you're on the committee. We give you, I know if Wolf has to talk to us going forward. But that, that's the only thing I, I would say is keep us out of it as much as you can.
Councilor Kylie.
Yeah, you make your decisions, but I'm kind of touching on what Norm said, maybe repeating myself. But the fact that, like with the insurance, if we can get a rider and let's say it's fifteen hundred dollars, instead of the group having to go out and spend five thousand dollars, then I would like to see the town work with them on that.
Yeah, get them to discount.
Yeah.
Not pay the bill.
What's that?
Not pay the bill, but find the discount.
Coming out of their.
I don't think they're asking, yeah.
Yeah. So I just want that clear. We're, we'd be willing to look at that. We, we're a little early on the insurance because we don't know the amounts. But Wolf, you can update us on that.
Councilor Shamia.
Yeah, just to make sure, like, what I would do, and, and those guys, I would get my own insurance, like you guys. I would get a price. And if the price is, like Pat said, six thousand, seven thousand, I would come back and say, "Guys, it's too much for us. We can't afford it and can we go half and half or something?"
Okay.
If it's, if it's eight hundred dollars, then you don't have to worry. Like, you have to protect yourselves, Sue, too. And, yeah, that, that's important. I know you think the town will protect you, but like the thing just said clearly, you, you're just unarmed, the town, and you don't follow the, the town rules. You don't follow procurement rules. So that means you're not really part of the town. So you have to watch yourself, like, I don't want you getting troubles, Sue. So, yeah, so I would talk to the insurance guys and make sure, tell them what's going on and they, they will help you. We have great insurance guys in town and they'll be, they'll be ready to help you for sure. They're really community oriented and they, they will do the best they can, actually. Because that's the best way to do it, I think, Tony, you're right. We should not get involved unless, unless the amount of money is so big that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. We just want to make everything very transparent and also due diligence. Make sure that we, you know, that we weren't putting the town or our committee in any.
No, no, I'm, I'm happy you come, you can come anytime you want to, Lynn. I would talk to Julie or Robin, maybe, because they did, they just did it with the festival committee. So I would try to follow maybe the same idea they did. The cost, but it is cost to cost, I mean, what can you do?
Okay. Well, thank you. I think we have a resolution, though, Joanne's going to read, and.
It's moved by Councilor Morgan, seconded by Councilor Mino. The council accepts a donation for the Hundredth Anniversary Committee from an anonymous donor funding for the location of the office, the official headquarters for the centennial celebrations. An amount equal to the donation will be forwarded to the Hundredth Anniversary Committee for their use in administrative setup.
All in favor? Let's carry it. Thank you very much.
Thanks for having us.
I hope you got your answer.
Thanks.
Oh, we'll be back.
Of course, you're all, you're always welcome to come back, my goodness. Okay, item five is acceptance of minutes and recommendations.
It's moved by Councilor Morgan, seconded by Councilor Kylie. The council accepts the minutes of the following meetings. The committee of adjustment held January sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen. The meeting to open sealed quotations for equipment rental, highway tractor and trailer, held April third, two thousand and eighteen. The finance meeting held April third, two thousand and eighteen. And the regular meeting of council held April third, two thousand and eighteen.
All in favor? Let's carry it, thank you.
Item six, reports of municipal officers and communications. Manager of planning and land development. First, item A is the age-friendly plan. And I think Brooklyn, and.
She wanted some company. All right, well, Brooklyn gets this ready. I'm not sure if anybody remembers Brooklyn. She did come to a council meeting right when she started off her internship with me in the planning department last year. She's been working on our age-friendly community planning. So at this point, she's just presenting you with the findings and the plan that was created as a result of her research. All right. All right. So as she just said, I've been working on the creation of an age-friendly community plan. So this looks at improving the community for our senior residents. So this is important because according to the two thousand and sixteen census, forty-five percent of residents were fifty years of older, fifty years or older, which is almost half of our population. So we did a two-part public consultation process. We had meetings every month with seniors and service providers to talk about eight different topics about age, that encompassed different aspects of age-friendly communities. We also had a survey go out, which came back with over a hundred and forty responses, which was really good. The data from the survey was compiled into a report, which goes, which is going to go along with the final plan and both will be made available on the municipal website. Each of the, there were eight topics. Each of those eight topics, two major concerns were identified through the public consultation process. So first was just the safety and comfort of pedestrians walking around town and the accessibility of buildings for transportation. It was cost and the actual availability of different options and also road conditions for drivers, so things like intersections that might be a little bit more dangerous. Housing, there was, people were concerned that there's not enough housing to support seniors who can't necessarily take care of their own home, but aren't ready for long-term care services. And then an overall lack of services that actually keep people in their own houses for longer. Social participation, people were having issues getting to and from events or having issues accessing information about when and where events were. Respect and social inclusion, so things like online banking or social media are creating barriers for seniors. And there's just an overall lack of consideration for them simply because people don't realize that they need different things than younger people. Civic participation and employment, most people are retired, so employment wasn't, wasn't an issue. But people felt that there was too much pressure on older volunteers because younger people just aren't committing. And then there was the issue of actually finding opportunities to volunteer. Communication and information is the biggest one. And just because in some of the other areas, finding information can be difficult, especially for, there's the over-reliance on things like social media where seniors may not have access to that platform. And the last one, community support and health services, it goes back to transportation, especially for out-of-town medical appointments and issues with finding information and accessing service providers. So we identified four of these topics that were priorities for the town to focus on. So the first one was communication and information. You know, if people don't know what's going on or where to get information, then they just can't use the services or attend the programs. Transportation was next. Even though most seniors still drive themselves right now, that can change very quickly and it really limits people's independence. Housing was the next one because it's important to keep people living independently and it would also relieve pressure on long-term care services and keep people in the community instead of looking elsewhere for the housing that they need. The last one was outdoor spaces in public buildings. Uh, the last one was outdoor spaces and public buildings. So that would just, um, that would address accessibility issues, walkability, and the overall physical environment of the community. And the last thing that I want to talk about is, uh, the action plan that we developed, uh, with the pla, the final plan. So for each of the topics, there were a few things that we thought that could be encouraged or done by the municipality. Um, the first is to look for ways to improve snow removal, especially on sidewalks. Um, consider the creation of a sidewalk improvement plan and definitely extending time to cross at pedestrian lights. Um, there was also the idea of conducting a traffic study to find out where, um, the most problem areas are in town. So again, maybe dangerous intersections, um, visibility issues. Um, there's the possibility also of partnering with the taxi companies to provide flat rates or discounted rates for seniors. And then to work, um, to enhance or promote better, uh, out-of-town transportation services. And there was the idea of, we want to promote the creation of, um, senior housing or housing that is specifically oriented for seniors, and also investigate opportunities for the creation or for a community group to, um, host a house sharing program because that has been working very well down south. Um, social participation, there was the idea of hosting films for seniors like we already do for children, and then encouraging common areas in, uh, new and existing apartment complexes. Respect and social inclusion, so we want to look at making a checklist that would go out to businesses so that they can improve their services for seniors, um, and finding different ways to connect isolated individuals. For civic participation and employment, we can't really control, um, whether or not younger people are volunteering, but we can, uh, look at maybe creating a volunteering database so that it makes it easier for people to find out what's available. For the big one, communication and information, we want to look at creating an age-friendly community guide. So this would list all the services and programs that are available in town and in the region, so people don't have to look all over the place to figure out what they need. And we also wanted to look at holding the Golden Years Expo, which we had in twenty sixteen, um, either annually or every second year, because people really felt that it was a good way to get information out. And then the last one, community support and health services, again, it's, goes back to the transportation issues and, uh, the communication and information issues. Um, so that is all I have. Are there any questions?
Tony. Counselor Mino.
Brooklyn, the, when you mentioned the action plan, what do you define as short, short-term, medium and long-term? What's the, what do you?
I guess it would be, short-term would be things that we can start working on right away, and long-term things would be things that maybe we could start working on, but they wouldn't see any changes until like for a year, two years. Um, short-term, I guess, would be something that could be done in a couple months, and long-term, maybe by five years, it could be completed.
So we would not necessarily be trying to implement everything there. We'd have to prioritize.
Yeah, it would be prioritizing different things and picking what we can actually accomplish.
Thank you. Good, uh, good plan.
Counselor Kylie.
Yeah, Todd, if I can mention, Tom, uh, we're on the nonprofit housing board, and one of the plans that we are working on right now, uh, there is a huge space on the second floor, I believe. Uh, we call it the bowling alley. It's a big open area. And we're looking at, uh, changing that to, for social activities and, and meetings, uh, for the people in that, uh, particular unit, and there's funding available for that. So that's one thing that we are working on as, as we speak. It's in the works right now. So there, there is a definite need for that in some of these, uh, social housing, uh, units. We hope to take advantage of that.
And even this plan, um, it's not all necessarily things that the municipality can do. Just having the plan and, and making community groups and other people in town aware that these things should be happening. It can start the process for other, um, initiatives.
Lot of work went into this, so you did a great job.
Thank you.
Counselor Morgan.
Yeah, thanks very much, Brooklyn. This is a tremendous amount of work. I just, one question that, uh, house sharing, what is, what exactly is that? I've never heard that expression before.
It was, um, I can't remember where it was, but there were a few different places, uh, where they would pair up other, uh, senior who owns a home but can't necessarily do all of the chores, or they can't cover all of the costs, and put in other, an older or younger senior, uh, with them who needs somewhere to live and would help cover costs or help with chores or, just so that people can stay in their houses longer. And I thought that would be very good for Kirkland Lake since we don't have a lot of apartment buildings that could accommodate seniors.
Counselor Shamir.
Yeah, in the same, uh, same idea. Um, you said in somewhere that we don't have, we're missing people to, to go help seniors in their, in their house, I think?
Uh, it's not necessarily just, um, people, uh, like the personal support workers or that. It's also things like, um, taking care of your lawn or your yard or small house repairs. Um, things like that, that they can't necessarily do themselves, but they also can't afford to hire someone or hire like a contractor or.
Okay, 'cause my question was, I thought we had all the service in town, but, yeah, that's a bit different.
Yeah.
Thanks, Brooklyn.
Yeah, certainly a real in-depth, uh, report, Brooklyn. You did a really good job on this, and, uh, it's obvious it, uh, a lot of work, a lot of time went into it, and isn't communication always seems to be one of the problems that we have, whether it's, whether it's communicating in the offices or, communication seems to be the hardest, uh, always the one that's earmarked for improvement, and this is no different, is it? Uh, getting the message out, I think is, uh, getting the message out through the right media is probably the, one of the most difficult things. But, uh, uh, at least people are thinking of it, and, uh, because a lot of times, you know, people will, so, you know, I guess the, the standard answer, well, I, I never even knew was taking place, you know? Some people would have went if they would have known it was taking place, but, so communication's very important and, uh, golden years, you know? Isn't they beautiful? You know, but, uh, it's, uh, it's, it's a great report. Um, there's some good golds there, and I certainly want to thank you for putting the effort in and, and getting this information out. It's a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to chime in and say thank you to the committee members that did come out every month to provide input. Um, they were great. They didn't just provide us with, uh, issues. They came ready to provide us with options and things they've seen in other municipalities. It was a really, really well, uh, lots of things were discussed in that hour and a half meeting, and I think Brooklyn can vouch for that. She went and had to do a lot of research, so, yeah, we, we want to thank Brooklyn for everything too.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you.
So item B, six B is the repeal of lease agreement behind sixty-one McCamus, and that'll come back as a bylaw, uh, later?
Yep. So this is just to, uh, every year we actually go through our, uh, leases that seem, we, we end up setting the bills out. Some people come back and they've recently purchased a property and realize that that lease was not part of the original transfer, or they're, we're not going to use that piece of land. Uh, is it okay if I repeal? So typically, it started off pretty, I'm sure about three, four years ago, we used to have maybe five, six different things to repeal. This year we have one that came back, uh, and this individual lives at sixty-one McCamus Avenue, and it is a laneway to the rear of that property. It is fully grown in, so not being used. It's not like you can go and take and start making use of it without us, uh, or without the lease. Uh, so at this point, we recommended that we proceed with repealing that lease.
Thank you. Again, that'll come back as a bylaw, and, uh, encroachment for, uh, sixteen Government Road?
Yep. You're stuck with me for a little bit today, sorry.
Yep, that's fine.
Uh, so sixteen Government Road East, this is actually the Max and the Esso located on the corner of Tweeds and American Government Road East. Uh, the owner of the property had a, had brought us a survey and, which identified that there were some encroachments in terms of our infrastructure, water, um, our storm mains, catch basins, uh, traffic lights. Uh, so at this point, um, what we ended up doing with that owner is we agreed upon some terms and created an encroachment agreement just to waive the liability associated with him on that property and us encroaching. Uh, the negotiated rate's the same as what's stipulated in our user fees, so it's a hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Okay.
Any questions?
That'll come back as a bylaws, well, yes. And item D, uh, request to purchase.
Yes.
It's always a good one.
Uh, good news.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we've got two lots on callback that, um, have been requested to be purchased from Cal Greggich. Uh, the intent here is to build one house, uh, with a garage on two lots. So the deal would be ten thousand dollars per lot, uh, reimbursement of five thousand if house is constructed within the first year, and three thousand if it's constructed within the second. Uh, I do want to emphasize that there is, after this, only four lots remaining in that, um, that package we did put together back in two thousand and fourteen.
Okay, item E, uh, requests for Northern Thunder, uh, Team Northern Thunder for test and tune.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask Renzo to come actually and stand up in case you guys have any technical questions that I may not be able to answer. So as you are aware, we do have the drag race happening, um, in June. Uh, this is the second request that's come in from TNT. Uh, the, they're interested in holding a test and tune, and the purpose was to, uh, they actually got a new timer, uh, and they're wanting to test that out before this drag race takes place. They are anticipating to see people come in and, and, uh, be at the airport, so there would be spectators there. It won't be to the same level as the drag race, but, um, at this point, they are willing to pay the user fee that's stipulated as of right now, so three hundred dollar per day. Um, they, they do have a sports tourism application in as well that will be coming to council shortly for the actual drag race. Um, I did want to emphasize that when there is a, this is something that we kind of have been discussing, um, in terms of the medevac flights, if there's an emergent need for a medevac flight to land, there's no issues with trying to accommodate that during this event. Uh, also, kale gold will not be affected, they're outside of the date that, uh, that they're requiring, uh, or requesting permission to operate. Is there any questions?
Counselor Mino.
Actually, this is just using the runway itself. They're not camping and they're not doing all kinds of other.
Yes, so there, there'll be camping.
There'll be some camping as well, so we've got that under control.
Yep, that's all gonna, it's gonna be stipulated in the lease that we've, um, or it's not the lease, but the access or user agreement. Uh, we did get that reviewed by the lawyers this year too, to make sure that there was no liability concerns. So we've got one ready to go. We'll use the same ones for this event, just change the dates.
Thank you.
Yeah, my question is, are they gonna use it all day Friday or?
My request is, Friday would be for setting it up, Saturday and Sunday would be the actual.
'Cause if you just go there Fri- Friday night, I mean, really, it's two days, it's not three days. That's what I was trying to, trying to help them. I mean, you guys decide, but if you go there at four, four, four-thirty, five o'clock, I mean, I don't think we have to charge them for the Friday days. Um, Saturday, Sunday would be.
I would say there's probably stuff that is to be done Friday.
Okay, so you'll be there all day Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Okay. Perfect, guys. Thanks.
And that, that, that'll, oh, a resolution?
It's moved by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor Mino. The council approves their request from Team Northern Throttle to use the Kirkland Lake Airport, May eighteenth to twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, for a test and tune weekend.
All in favor? Let's carry. Thank you.
Would that be more, more rain this year?
No rain this year.
No, it's gonna be snow.
Yeah.
Uh, item F is request to, uh, for airport use, June the second, re, Young Eagles Flying Day.
Hmm. Who would have thought we'd certify airport and we get three other, just funny. Uh, okay, so we did get, receive a request from Rob Murdock. Um, he's, um, I'm not sure if you've ever heard of this program, Young Eagles. It's a, um, it's put on by the Experimental Aircraft Association. It's to introduce youth up to the age of seventeen to general aviation by offering a free local ride. So the event is proposed to be held on June second. They have a backup date of June tenth, uh, and it runs from nine AM to one PM. They plan on hosting a barbecue as well. Um, in terms of what the request is, in order to make this successful for them, they're, they're asking whether we can waive the landing fees for the aircrafts, uh, offer fuel at a discount for participants, uh, open the vehicle gate for the members who are flying, and to open the terminal building to register and organize riders and have the washroom facilities available for them for the day. So in terms of, uh, the opinion from staff, uh, we typically have that rental of the airport take place with the drag race. Um, the new, new fee's four hundred dollars per day, starting with the new user fees coming into play tonight. Um, and the landing fees could certainly be waived without significantly affecting anticipated revenue. Uh, offering the fuel for free, uh, would certainly not be recommended. Uh, at this point, what we would like to do is offer, uh, the staff recommendation is to discount the fuel by doing half the markup. So it covers our cost a little bit more, but it's giving them a little bit of a deal. Uh, there's no concerns with opening the gates for the EA members. Uh, we did, uh, just wanted to reiterate that that is waiving an additional fee of a hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, typically, they need to have a, uh, airside vehicle operator permit to be with their vehicles on the inside of the, the airport. Uh, we also want to ensure that, uh, the non-EAA members do not have access for the gate, and that's just for safety reasons, and that's has been emphasized with Rob. Well, opening the terminal buildings and registering, uh, or organizing riders, we're, again, not concerned about this. Um, and then we did want to mention that we were going to have to dedicate a staff for those four hours that are there, uh, just to monitor radio traffic and to fuel the aircrafts that are there. So there is costs associated with that, um, which could potentially lead to some overtime hours. So just to be fully aware of those costs before you make a decision. Are there questions at this point?
Counselor Morgan.
Yeah, Ashley, uh, with an event like this, because it's something new, um, will one of our staff be keeping sort of statistics on, on how it, how successful it is so that we know, like, how much uptake there is and to help us make a decision in the future if they want to do this again?
I'm pretty sure Rob will be doing that as well, because they're gonna want to make sure it's worth their while. They're having to pay for the, the gas and the, all of that as well. But, I mean, staff could take, take a look at the stats as well. We have them there.
But the gas is just going into their planes, right?
Yep. It's going, but they're volunteering their time to drive them around and the wear and tear of their equipment. They're gonna want to see that it's worthwhile as well, and the whole point of them doing it is to get people, I think what Rob was saying with the Experimental Aircraft Association is you actually sign up with your email or your address, so you'll actually get a postcard from this association later with more information to try and, you know, recruit the younger generation into that, that general aviation field.
Okay, but it would, for me, it would be helpful to know what the turnout is.
Yeah, sure.
So if we have some independent way of verifying that or?
We can have, with a signup sheet.
'Cause if we have a, if we have a staff person out there anyway, I'm just, it would help me to make the decision again in the future whether it's, okay, thank you.
Okay, is that a resolution? There's a resolution.
It's moved by Counselor Mino, seconded by Counselor Kylie. The council approves the request to host the Young Eagles Flying Day at the Kirkland Lake Airport on Saturday, June second, two thousand and eighteen, alternate date on June tenth, and the associated rental and landing fees be waived, and that fuel be sold to the participants at a discounted rate.
All in favor?
The discounted rate, how will that be calculated? I guess that's where.
Oh, the discounted rate for fuel? That was, what my recommendation was, half the markup. So it's the cost of the fuel plus our markup, but half, just to have that markup for revenues.
Like how much gas, how much fuel they put in the plane?
Seconds from a clean getaway. Typically sixty liters from, with an empty tank, so.
Oh, so it's not?
Not a lot of fuel.
Okay, more like a car.
Yeah.
Thanks. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item six-two is, Wolf, you're gonna talk on QP ten seventy-four?
Yes, sir, very quickly. I'd like to say that the corporation did come to an agreement with the union at TPR. It was a very fair, equitable arrangement, serves the best interests of the residents and the community. The settlement, I believe, was one point five, one point five, one point five, which was better than we had arranged with QP twenty-six. So kudos to the negotiating staff. The, can I carry on, sir?
Yep, please.
The second item is the AFMO Conference. We will be hosting that in September. Roughly, I, I would anticipate roughly one hundred and fifty to two hundred people will be descending on Kirkland Lake. The agreement that is brought forward as part of the agenda is simply a management agreement. It specifies what the rules are, what the costs are, and what each party will be responsible for.
Any questions? That's gonna be coming back as a bylaw as we go. Okay? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Joanne, you're gonna speak on Royal Canadian Legion Parade Request?
This is a request that came in from the Royal Canadian Legion this week, or April twentieth and twenty-first, that is this weekend. They are holding their district spring convention, so they do have a dinner on the Friday, and on Saturday, they are asking for a parade permit in which they just parade from the parking lot to the cenotaph and back. So it starts at one o'clock and is usually over by one twenty, and they're asking for council's permission to do that. So I have a resolution. It's moved by councillor Kylie, seconded by councillor Mino. The council approves the request from the Royal Canadian Legion Branch eighty-seven for a parade permit on Saturday, April the twenty-first, from the Legion parking lot to the cenotaph and return, beginning at one o'clock.
All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you. Item B is the National Day of Mourning.
So this is a request that came in from the injured workers group. They're just asking for council to please recognize the National Day of Mourning. This is done throughout Canada. They are holding a ceremony at the Royal Canadian Legion on the twenty-eighth, and at this time, they've also asked that our flags be put at half mast. So that's the flag at Town Hall and the one at the Miners Memorial Monument also. And they do ask anybody, encourage everybody to attend. So I have a resolution that's moved by councillor Mino, seconded by councillor Kylie. The council observes Saturday, April twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, as the National Day of Mourning, and that the flags at Town Hall and the Miners Memorial Monument be placed at half mast.
All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you. Item C, Community Living Month?
So this is a request that came in from Canadian Living, Community Living, sorry, Community Living is asking to have May declared as Community Living Month, which is what we do, we've been doing that for the last little while. They do have activities that go on throughout the month that are promoting Community Living. They're asking to have the, the month declared, and they're also asking that flag be raised at Town Hall on May first. They're asking for a bit of a ceremony where all of their, their clients do come up, and having Count, Mayor, and whatever councils, whatever members of council would like to attend, also come.
Okay, there's a resolution for that?
There is a resolution. It's moved by councillor Kylie and seconded by councillor Mino. The council declares May two thousand and eighteen as Community Living Month in and for the town of Kirkland Lake, and that the Community Living flag be flown at Town Hall, subject to other requests for flying flags.
All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you.
Can I just comment?
Yes, please.
I'd like to, one more comment on this, just so the council's aware. Coming in May, there's Ontario Nurses Week, and so they have asked to have their flag flown also, so there would probably be about a week where we would take down Community Living and put up the nursing flag, and then Community Living would go up for the rest of the month, which is why we do say that it's subject to the requests for flying.
The only thing I would ask is, we don't fly them both at the same time?
No.
That's a no-no?
We only have one flag pole.
Oh, but you can't put two flags?
No. We don't have that capacity.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that, Joanne.
Okay. The next one is a request from the township of Madawaska Valley, and they're asking for all municipalities to, to support their petition. There is legislation in place that's mandated municipalities to implement asset management plans, and Madawaska is, is suggesting that small rural municipalities face significant resource capacity challenges in the collection and the maintenance of accurate data, and they're saying that the province should actually be funding the cost of these tools that need to be used. And so they're asking for, for council support in this. So I do have a resolution that is moved by councillor Mino and seconded by councillor Kylie. The council of the town of Kirkland Lake supports the township of Madawaska Valley in its petition to the province of Ontario to provide adequate financial resources for both staff and infrastructure to ensure successful compliance and implementation of the required municipal function for asset management planning in small and rural municipalities.
All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you.
And my last item is actually two bylaws that will come back to you. These have to do with issues that have to be done for the election. These are two legislated requirements that need to be put in place by nomination day, which is May first. Both of these, which is the use of corporate resources policy, the signage bylaw, have been put in place before. All we've done is brought them forward and updated them. The use of corporate resources policy needed to be changed a little bit and updated to take into consideration the change in modern communication. So this, what this does is this really does protect the municipality and staff so that they're not used, the resources are not used for the elections. And the signage bylaw, there really is very little that we have updated in that. It does regulate when signs can go out, which is forty-five days before the election, the size of the signs, and where they can be placed.
Is there others?
There's two bylaws, yes.
That'll come back as a bylaw?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, item six-four, a complex elevator modernization contract?
As indicated in the report, we were obligated to shut down the elevator at the community complex back in two thousand and sixteen, and that was due to the technical standards and safety authority determining that we did not meet the code that has changed over time. So we have been without an elevator for the past, probably almost two years. We did receive dollars allocated through capital money through the gas tax last year in two thousand and seventeen to pursue the modernization of the elevator. However, we had to wait until we had the front door open again after the pool construction, so that's why there's a little bit of a delay. So at this point, we have issued the RFP. Because we are now doing an update, we are also required to ensure that we have all accessible requirements for the elevator as well, so that's why it's called an elevator modernization. So we're doing the upgrades to meet the TSSA standard as well as accessibility requirements to upgrade as well. So we issued the RFP, we did receive three different bids in. We had an elevator consultant who was recommended to us through TSSA to evaluate, as well as our procurement coordinator and staff, and we had a decision matrix that was based on qualifications, experience, the value and value added, that those were the main criteria, and we all agreed that ThyssenKrupp had the highest score. They also were the lowest bid of the ones that we were able to accept. So we do recommend that we go with the, of the ones we were able to accept, which were two, because they bid to the criteria that was in the RFP. We do go with ThyssenKrupp. They had the highest score and the lowest dollar value.
Councillor Kylie.
Can we ask what that dollar amount is, so we know what we're approving?
Yeah, it's in the report. A hundred and twenty-six thousand plus HST was the bid. There will be some additional fees that the town may incur, so what those means, if there's spills, then it's up to the town to get our town's vacuum truck in, things like that. If they get into the, it's called a well hole, if they get into the hole and they determine that to change this single bottom cylinder, that there has to be more drilling, then that's a cost that they can't bid on. So there's a potential for additional costs. They are unknowns right now. It, it, it's well within the threshold of what council has approved in the past. So we don't believe we're gonna go over what has been, although there are some unknowns.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and we've been a while waiting for the elevator. I guess it was always, you know, we couldn't get it in with the construction of the pool, but now that's done, we'll be going full, full tilt to get that repaired, and people will, the community complex will be accessible, going down to the activity room, I guess.
Correct, yes.
And down to the dressing room, so look forward to that. Thank you. And that's gonna come back as a bylaw. And that's where we are right now as the introduction, reading, and consideration of bylaws.
It's moved by councillor Kylie, seconded by councillor Mino. The bylaw eighteen dash zero five-two, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute a contract with ThyssenKrupp Elevator Limited for modernization of the elevator, or the complex elevator, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you.
It's moved by councillor Mino, seconded by councillor Kylie. The bylaw eighteen dash zero five-four, being a bylaw to repeal bylaw nine one dash zero eight-eight, lease of land at sixty-two McCamus Avenue, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you.
It's moved by councillor Kylie, seconded by councillor Mino. The bylaw eighteen dash zero five-five, being a bylaw to deem property at five zero seven seven Goodfish Road part of a registered plan not to be registered, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you.
It's moved by councillor Morgan, seconded by councillor Mino. The bylaw eighteen dash zero five-six, being a bylaw to set the two thousand and eighteen user fees, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you.
Moved by councillor Mino, seconded by councillor Morgan. The bylaw eighteen dash zero five-seven, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute all documents related to the sale of eight and ten Callback Avenue to Kyle Gregorich, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you.
It's moved by councillor Morgan, seconded by councillor Mino. The bylaw eighteen dash zero five-eight, being a bylaw to authorize the execution of a memorandum of settlement with QP Local ten seventy-four for the period of September first, two thousand and seventeen, to August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you.
It's moved by councillor Mino, seconded by councillor Morgan. The bylaw eighteen dash zero five-nine, being a bylaw to adopt election use of corporate resources policy, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? Thank you. It's Carrie.
It's moved by councillor Morgan, seconded by councillor Mino. The bylaw eighteen dash zero six-zero, being a bylaw to regulate election signage in the town of Kirkland Lake, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you.
It's moved by councillor Mino, seconded by councillor Morgan. The bylaw eighteen dash zero six-one, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with AFMO for hosting the September two thousand and eighteen conference, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you.
It's moved by councillor Morgan, seconded by councillor Mino. The bylaw eighteen dash zero six-two, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with B and R Environmental Services for rental of equipment for recycling transport, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you.
It's moved by councillor Mino, seconded by councillor Morgan. The bylaw eighteen dash zero six-four, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute an encroachment agreement at sixteen Government Road East, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? Thank you.
It's moved by councillor Morgan, seconded by councillor Mino. The bylaw eighteen dash zero six-five, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with Northern Tel Limited Partnership for the KAL Water Tower, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you.
That's it.
Item eight, notices of motion. Confirmation bylaw?
It's moved by councillor Mino, seconded by councillor Morgan. The bylaw eighteen dash zero six-three, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held April seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen, or two thousand and eighteen, sorry, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you. Councillors' reports? Councillor Chamier?
I know you cut down Facebook an hour ago, Tony, but through Facebook, Humboldt City with their big accident was united, basically, Canada and the US and basically the world. They have raised almost twelve million dollars, and Kirkland Lake was a part of that. Not a big part, but, you know, with people got involved, and there was a lot of people in the complex ironite, and, you know, as much as you can say, we always know that Canada has a back of young, small town, I mean, and we're, we're a small town.
Yep, very much so. Thank you for that. Yes, Tom, councillor Tom.
Prior to the meeting, I was asked by an individual to see what was going on with the rec committee formation. We can just consider that, whether or not we wanna look at reorganizing rec committee or leave it to the next council to create the framework for that. I just wanted to bring that up and see if there's any direction moving forward.
Okay, thank you for that.
I just want to, had the pleasure of attending the Legion Memorial Banquet. It's an annual banquet. Pay tribute to the, all the veterans from World War I to the Korean War that are no longer here with us today, and also gives the town an opportunity to thank the Legion for being such an important part of our community over the last many, many years. And that was a, was also the awards night at the Legion and a lot of community volunteers. It's surprising to me to see just how many volunteers there are at the Legion that keeps that going. It's, it's pretty well a hundred percent volunteer. And that was a pleasure to represent the town there, as well as, I went to the skating party on this, the fundraising skate on Saturday night, representing the town, and it was a great turnout. I don't know what the final numbers were, but there was certainly lots of enthusiasm out there. Over six thousand dollars, wow, you know? It was great to see all the young people there. Some of the gold miners came back. It was a, I think what touched home the most was one of the gold miners that returned for the skate on Saturday was also a member of the Humboldt Broncos prior to being traded to Kirkland Lake, so there was certainly some connection there. It's, and it was great to see that young, young lad come back. And I just wanted to thank all the community for coming out that night and being so generous for that, for that event as well.
Yes, please. Councillor Barker.
I did represent council at the Contemporary Arts Exhibit and Exhibition last week, and I believe it was, and we had an international artist come, originally from South Korea, living out of Finland and doing art, and we had entries for the exhibit from all provinces. Last year, we had some from Germany and other international. So Kirkland Lake is making a huge splash in the art scene globally, and we're very fortunate to have Sukku Park come and do a, a talk and an exhibition, and we're one of the few spots in Canada that have actually had this stuff on, on display, so.
Yeah, and thank you, Tom, for, for stepping up and going in my place. I really appreciate it.
It's moved by councillor Morgan, seconded by councillor Mino. The council adjourn its regular meeting of April seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, to an in-camera meeting to discuss one potential sale issue.
All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you. Meeting is adjourned.